Hey.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Feel great.
We're good, alive? Jackie, you're good? Okay, welcome to our city council meeting tonight. Just quickly note, we've got Councilman Hodges on line. Okay, he's good now. Do we have anybody else yet? Is Jared on yet? So we do have a quorum. Councilman Henderson and Councilman Shilds are supposed to join shortly, but we do have the three as quorum, so we're gonna move forward. Start with item 1.1, review of this evening's agenda. Any comments, changes? See none, future agenda items. Anything from council or staff, future agenda items? Okay, see none right now. Council discussion of future citizen recognition. Anything, Jackie? I haven't seen anything.
Do you have anything that you want us to pursue?
Okay, we'll move on to 2.1, Hidden Oaks Master Development Amendment Discussion. Nathan?
And John, there's a PowerPoint. The clicker? Alright, um, so, quickly, what you're being asked to give some input on is whether you, if there's anything just drop dead you don't want to do with this. They're looking, before Ivory puts a bunch of effort into this, they want to get a feel for council's thoughts. So, um, talking about Hidden Oaks, that area right there. This is their proposed map, and so we're gonna specifically be talking about pods 15 and 17 here, and Pod 10. Those are the areas that are being impacted. So, what they want to do is eliminate the requirement for senior only in pods 15 and 17. And in that plan, I'll show you what they've currently done, they have a bunch of common space that would be maintained by an HOA. In this, they would just push those in and have larger single family, traditional single-family lots. Move six lots from that group up into Pod 10, which would then allow, and then allow for some smaller lots in Pod 10 in that one side. It does not change the number of allowable units in the PUD, or in the HOA. MDA. We have too many acronyms in this mad world. So, this is ultimately what they would do. They actually have taken, this is pods 14, 15, 16, and 17, I think even 18 are all shown on this map. They've kind of said, here's how we'd do it. This is the area in question, looks more like a traditional subdivision. This is what was actually approved in Pod 17, but they've kind of stopped working on it. These just show what we'd call like a pad development. Is that the phrase, Mike? Essentially, these would be a home with this open space around it. And so, they're saying they would go away from that. This had a senior-only component. And then in Pod 10, they would take those extra units on this one side. So this is the school here, the elementary school right here. On this side, they would allow for these smaller lots.
Twenty-two of them, right?
Approximately. It's just a concept.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
It's a concept.
I don't have to count them, but... Yeah, so they're smaller. These are kind of some pictures. They're showing how the garage layout might work in this. You see it on this example, there's a garage behind, kind of maybe more harken back, a couple generations back to how houses used to be built.
And there's enough setback on the side access garages in the back?
Yes, yeah, there'd be a single width. Yes, on this, it would be a single width, and then they're talking about it's a zero setback for those garages.
So can we ride on the property line?
Correct. And so, that's if you're open to the proposal. If there's any of that you want me to show you again?
Nathan, if I could too, I'll kind of intro how this came about. So this was, because I sit on the CHA now, the Commission on Housing Affordability, and Chris Gabriulis with Ivory is on that with me. And him and I kind of side our conversation about what can Harriman truly do? Like, what can, and we've talked about that. We tried, you know, we tried those small lots out in the Wasatch, who ended up with $550,000 homes, right? Which isn't, it's not affordable. So like, you know, so Chris asked about getting rid of this senior housing, and I challenged him. I said, "Okay, be part of the solution then. Build some affordable units out here." So that's, that's what he said, "Okay, let me see what you can come back with." So that's where this kind of, I mean, I want to make sure that it's not just small lots. That's my only put. I would like to see that these are, I don't know if they're open to a deed restriction type discussion, or if they're open to-
What's the price here? What's the price point?
Are you with?
Yeah, I'm with Ivory.
What's the price point?
Do you know price point on these?
I don't know the price point. I mean, we don't know what we're doing yet, so we would have to know what we're doing.
One of the keys that we've been talking about is small lot, but also a smaller home. And Ivory has experience with building some of these smaller homes in other projects in the city. And then-
So the house on the, like, the second one down on your left, we're building in Daybreak?
This one right here?
Yes. That is about a 950 square foot Rambler, and it's a rear-load home, but we're saying we could just take the garage off and, and build a 950 square foot Rambler, and then offer that to people without a garage that they could then add later. And that knocks 30, 40 grand off the price right there, that they could add the garage in the back later. And so we're trying everything we can do to build a smaller house on a smaller footprint, on a road that already has all the improvements in. It makes sense to utilize the existing infrastructure that's there, so we could reduce the cost as much as possible and see what we can do to offer homes that are at an affordable price.
I thought in our packet, the details were more like 1,200 square feet, which seems a little large for 4,500 square foot of property. So you're talking more like 900 square foot?
Well, that, that particular house is a 900 square foot Rambler.
Some of these others-
They could do a couple different things. It's, the two-story ones are probably bigger.
And if, and if listed them on basements, will that be a full basement?
We would do a full unfinished basement.
Right.
Yep.
And I asked my son, I'll tell, I asked my son last night, he's living with us. I said, "Would you buy something like this without a garage right now? Say if you could get it at $450,000 right now?" Absolutely. I mean, I think this is a, yeah, I would love to see, I mean, that's, I guess that's my, if you think we can get into that $450,000, that, I mean, I know that's not still-
Is that affordable? Is that what you consider-
But it's below AMI out here, though.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what-
Just have to figure perspective. Townhomes in Eagle Mountain, as far out as you can get towards the Facebook, start at $390, $399, something like that. That's the most affordable thing I've seen anywhere in Utah.
Would there still be a driveway for parking?
Yeah.
So the on-street, but I'm looking at the on-street right there, wouldn't be a driveway.
A nightmare.
It'd be too hard without two-car parking off-street.
I'm assuming that's this dark line here.
But it's two cars, yeah. So they're parking on the road.
Yes, right.
There will be off-street parking on a, on a pad.
There will be what?
There will be parking on a, on a pad or something, yeah.
Off-street, because in front of those black lines are-
There's not enough feet between them to put a car.
Right. It'll be single. It'll be a single car driveway.
Right, but if they park in front of-
What we talked about is putting driveways together, so you could share, you know, a property line with a driveway approach. And that way you could actually get more space on the street for guest parking.
And, and we have done that in other places in the city. The nice thing is it's just one block face, right? It's not an entire neighborhood of this development pattern, off, across from a school, so.
That's the problem that Troy's bringing up.
The same problem we have everywhere else, and being over code enforcement, it becomes a problem for me. Without a garage, which is where people now store all their stuff, and the cars sit out, without a garage at all, where would they store their things? And would it become a in-the-yard issue?
You know, there's students we-
Unfinished basement.
I'm sure we could work through that. And the other nice thing is that you have this really long driveway, though. And I know tandem parking isn't as convenient, right? But, again, for affordability, it really does make a huge difference.
And I think that's where, even as a council, as a city, we've got to, it's changed, right? All these things are gonna come from the state, or that's, they're gonna come through the state. We're gonna be, it'll be two, you'll see that legislation probably this year, that's been in the CHA we've talked about. You'll probably see, we can only, we can only require two, you know, off-street spots.
Right, but I don't think you're allowing two off-street spots. I think you're allowing one.
Oh, they have to. They will do two, right.
I think you're gonna have to sign that no parking on at least one side of that.
For sure. Your muck widths are gonna force it that with the driveway flares and everything, you're not gonna have any parking.
Yeah, and on the school side, it's already signed for no parking.
Unless, like Brad said, if the driveways are put together, then you do allow-
Then you do sort of gain some things, I think. So the concept is doing smaller lots and smaller homes in this one portion. Talking about right here.
I guess I would say I'm open to it if, if we can, I want to see the price point, right? I don't want that to be a, I mean, I'm just being, if it's gonna be a $600,000, $550,000, $600,000, I, I don't think it's worth the change, Mike.
And then the trade-
Hey guys, this is Steve. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep, welcome.
Hey, thanks, guys. So, hey, just a quick comment is, I think you guys are, your conversations going in the direction that I want to go. It is, look, I'm, I'm ambivalent about the, the size of the lot, or the size of the house, or the features of the house, or whether it has a garage or not. None of that really makes any difference to me if it doesn't impact, impact the price point significantly. And what I'm concerned about is that we're talking about building a thousand-square-foot home for $450,000. I mean, we're talking almost $500 a square foot construction cost on these. Where, you know, for most homes, they're selling in the 2 to 250 range. These are, for, per square foot, these are twice as expensive as every other house. Now, I'm not saying that $450 makes, you know, is the make or break point, or even the price per square foot is the make or break point, but that just doesn't necessarily strike me as being at the heart of making affordable housing. And, and, and kind of doing an experiment in the middle of a really nice neighborhood with everything else that's going on. I mean, I'm open to be convinced, but at this point, I'm not necessarily so. So, for what it's worth, I just, price point is going to drive everything, so. And I know it's early in the plan, you're looking for some heads up for us to be able to do something or not do something, but I would say, until I get more information, I can't really give you any specific feedback one way or the other.
Could I ask one more question? There are really two separate issues. The one is making larger lots down on Pods 15 and 17. You know, there, we only have one little row of eight to nine thousand square foot. Most of them are quarters, thirds, halves, which I believe is what the council has voiced their opinion, so we're trying to do that too. And we're trying to do affordable housing at the same time without asking for any density bonus. So there's, there's no density bonus with this at all. And there's already allowance to ship stuff around, so we thought it might be a good place to try affordable housing. But if you don't want it, we don't have to add the seven units up there. We could just, or six units, whatever it was. We could just keep it as it is, and then just do the larger lots down below and lose six lots. This was just a, a chance for a win-win situation for the city to try something and see if it works.
I'll just echo Steve on that a little bit. I guess the question is affordable. Again, it's back to $450,000 for a, for a 900 square foot home. That's a lot of money per square foot, so.
Well, no one's thrown out the price yet.
No, I'm just saying that-
So, so I think the mayor's the one who put out the $450. We don't know what they said.
I guess, I guess that's the big question, because that doesn't seem affordable for 900 square feet, to me.
How can you-
Is the thought for this to go to a specific player group?
And we talked about it. I mean, I don't think it's just open. Right now it's just open. I think we need to come back with a workforce housing discussion at some point. I don't think that's this one. Um, I think that's, I think there's gonna have to be some, I think if we do that in the future, it's probably gonna have to be some density bonus types situations. And I don't think this is, to Steve's point, this is nice, but I don't think, I don't think this is-
Mayor Palmer, if I could, one additional comment?
Yeah?
Just, just in relation to what you're talking about is that, look, even if the price comes in, let's say that their price point is $325,000, or even 300, I'm, I'm just making a number. The problem is that that number, the demand is going to be so high, it's, we're driving the prices up. And so, if they have an ability to sell something at a, a certain price with a reasonable markup, what, what promises do we have as a city that they're going to be trying to keep those things at that price rather than at what the market price is set at? And that's, that's kind of at the whole part of the, the affordability discussion, is this idea that somehow if we build smaller lots and smaller houses, we're actually creating something more affordable. When all we've done is create more expensive, smaller homes on smaller lots. So until I can see that smaller homes and smaller lots actually equal smaller prices, I don't see that being a win.
And then it, then it, then we're asking the government to intercede on making, setting price points too. That's troubling a little to me. Or-
Yes?
So, I, I kind of sit there with Steve and realize that it's not the government's role to, you know, set pricing on houses, but like, get out of the way of affordability and release some of those things, like smaller lot lines, smaller lots. I'm all for that, but I believe it's a supply and demand issue with the market. You, if they flooded the market with half as many homes that are ready to be built, we wouldn't have this issue, I believe.
Would, is the proposal for these to be deed restricted, to owner-occupy, we just, we have-
We haven't got that one. It's just, it's just, the mayor met with Chris and challenged him to come up with that idea. So we came up with an idea that wouldn't cost you anything to try. Really, it's, it's already entitled, with the units, it's, it doesn't cost you anything to try, so. I mean, it's, that's really what the proposal was, and I think it was Chris out of good faith giving you an option.
That's what, this is Ivory's, I mean, this was me saying, you know, Chris tried, you know, let's see what we can do to, right, so. Again, I don't know if you call deed restriction a government, I mean, I get the free market, but if we want it guaranteed out here-
I was gonna say, if you don't.
If we don't, I don't think it'll ever happen, but if we, you know, if they're open to a deed restriction for certain years, then I think that's-
We've, we've worked on one like that in Park City, where the city came in with their affordable housing, and, and we sell it at a certain price, and they subsidize it. The homeowner gets to make a certain percentage over their homeownership life, and it's capped at like, I think it's 5% per year, that's capped up there. They can make 5% per year on their equity, and then when they sell it, they can sell it for whatever that price is at that time. And then the city can go in and buy that back down to the lower rate and keep it in their affordable housing pool. But they're using affordable housing funds to do that. So there's many vehicles to do that kind of thing with this.
And see, and our challenge too, Brett, we don't have that kind of money, right? You know, so that's where. So I mean, like I said, I'm one vote. I mean, I, I challenge, I want to see this a way to make it, you know, again, to your point, I want it, I don't want it to be $550,000 homes. I don't want it, if that's the case. I don't know what that number is. Like I said, I was just putting a number out there. But I, I mean, that's what I'm open to, but I need, there's three of you others right now that I'm open to your, whether you want them to pursue this or not. That's all we're asking is, do you want this to pursue then? You know, do we want to pursue this for? To the other, I don't think we have any concern. I don't have any concern about-
Mayor Palmer, let me say.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm a huge proponent of creativity and thinking outside the box, and new approaches, and new designs. I mean, I, I appreciate the efforts going into trying to find new means to create housing that is affordable. I'm just skeptical, I don't even know if that's the right word, that us continuing to make 20 houses here, or 15 houses there, or even 50 houses here, is actually bringing the prices of homes down. And instead, what we're making is more expensive, smaller homes, and we're not really impacting the market. And, and if all we're doing is creating more, more expensive, smaller homes, we're just gonna create an entire ecosystem of housing that's never going to be affordable for anyone, and the only housing that they can afford will be teeny-tiny homes on teeny-tiny lots that don't really work for families. And, and so, until we can come up with a broader market solution, these individual one-off neighborhood solutions just aren't, aren't necessarily persuading me. That doesn't necessarily mean I'm opposed to trying to do something. I just am, I would much prefer seeing some data showing that this is actually gonna change something in the housing prices.
This is Jared. You guys hear me?
Yep.
So I totally agree with everything that, that Steve said, and I don't want to belabor those details. I think there's a much broader conversation to have about affordability, which really comes in the deed restrictions and open market, et cetera, et cetera. The short answer for me on this particular project is I don't think it makes sense to, as Steve put it, experiment with something on, in, in a nice neighborhood that's already done, that we already have expectations, et cetera. Great, good ideas, and totally open to, to talking about them, but I don't think this is the right place, time, or, or way to do it.
I, I mean, there's, there are actually two pieces. Are you, so there's the removing the senior restriction and just going to standard, traditional, single-family with the larger lots on Pod 17 and 15. And then, and we've been talking about the move to Pod 10, but I, what I'm hearing from the applicants is they're actually two, they're kind of, they're, they are not mutually exclusive. You could do one without the other frigging crap.
So, so you're asking if we want to go with larger lots on 15 and 17, and then there was a transfer of some lots?
It would have been six lots. So we would, we would just end up losing six lots if you don't want to do the affordable.
You, you're agreeing to lose those six lots, and then, and we lose the open space?
We could still transfer them, but on those pods, we would lose six lots.
Their MDA gives them the ability to move between?
Right.
If you remember, the table had like a maximum that you could move. And, and we're like .9 acre shy of meeting the open space requirement? So either we, we could put it right at the approach coming into the subdivision on Pod 17, on the back lots, and just have open space right there, or we could put it all in the yards and make them all big half-acre plus lots. And right now, our proposal is make them all big lots, because I, I've heard from several people, that's what the city council wants, as big, as big a lots as possible.
You do.
And so that's what we're trying to do.
Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
I was gonna say, and they do have the ability, under the MDA, under our current code, to compensate the city for that open space. Essentially, if they had moved, they would simply pay the city an equivalent amount for being .9 short?
Yeah, whatever it is.
If you had to, right? That is an option within the agreement. I, I will say, I, I agree with the sentiment that this is not going to change the world. But for those 20 families, even those 20, 21, or 22 families that get to buy initially, if you were to address some of these concerns, it will make a difference for those 20 families.
It could be a city, it could be a city, it could be.
You know, you just, yeah, this is not gonna change the whole system of how we approach affordable housing, right?
We did an analysis the other day, just like two days ago. We have 55-foot wide lots in Eagle Mountain, and we are paying about $1,300 per lineal foot for the improvements. Plus, when you add in all the city fees and, and master allocations for oversized water lines and roads and everything, it, that's $22,000 per lot cap, no matter what. And then it's $1,300 per foot just to improve a lot. So if you reduce from a 55-foot wide lot to a 45-foot, or a 40-foot lot, it saves almost $20,000 off the lot price.
So this proposal by adding this-
No, it saves $20,000 off the lot cost. See, that is the, this is the language that gets us into trouble. It saves $20,000 off of the cost of the lot. It does not reduce the sales price $20,000 from the market sales price. Those are two unrelated, uncorrelated data points. We have to get, talking about the things that really impact prices. And it is not the fees that city charge. It is not the cost of improvements. It is what the market price of homes are, and that builders are going to build homes at what the price that the market will bear is. There's nothing wrong with that, and I'm not mad at you for it. I just don't, I think it's disingenuous to say that city fees are somehow causing homes to be less affordable, because it's not true.
I don't think I said that, did I?
Well said.
I, I, I think that we're chasing our tail a lot.
Yeah, I, I just-
Not, not you guys. I just think in general, in this whole affordability situation, we're watching legislation after legislation, trying to chase something that I think is a market-driven thing, that we, we're gonna chase it forever, and we're just gonna continue to make it worse, because we're gonna try and fix it at a government level, and it's really not a government problem to solve. We've been, I think, partners in Harriman. We've changed a lot of our, like, I, I can tell you myself, I voted no on this development, because I thought the farther out we got from our city, the larger the lot should be. I didn't think they should be as small as they are currently. And so, because of traffic and the impact it has downstream on everyone, right? So I like the idea of having larger lots. I thought they always should be what was matching out in that area, right? But I don't, I agree with everything, everything that's been said. We, we have this language that's constant at the legislative level. Affordable housing, we gotta fix this crisis, we gotta do this, and, and, and we're creating a mess, because we don't ever tap the brakes long enough to figure out what's causing the problem, and letting the market create, correct itself. We just keep chasing legislation. So thank you for your comments, Steve. I completely agree.
So let's try to get to an answer then. Let's, so I'm hearing, no, I'm hearing no on this right now, that's fine.
On, on the Pod 10-
I'm going to the affordable product, on the small. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, didn't you want to know the price point first? Well, if you wanted to bring back something that shows something like that, but I, I can tell you personally, I also have a big problem with subsidizing this, because you're asking every other homeowner to pay for somebody else's house. I don't agree with that either, so my answer would be no.
And we, this builder's built these homes in Daybreak across the street, the 900 square foot with the garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What's that price point in Daybreak?
I don't know. I haven't looked it up.
That is a higher price point, just in general, in the marketplace. It is a premium.
I, Daybreak, yeah, that's great.
Just by location.
So, so just so we can give them some direction, you're okay with the senior, removing this, the restriction on senior housing, or considering that on Pod 17 and 15, and going to the larger lots? I guess that's a step of questions. Is the council, how does the council feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that. Are we at a deficit, at an extreme deficit in our city for senior housing that we're desperate need of this? I don't want to be asked that.
I mean, seniors could buy this as well.
Exactly.
I mean, this is, this just isn't restricted.
Right, I'm okay. And as far as the park space, does this help us out to lose some of that open space? It wasn't really like open space, yeah, it wasn't like, oh, we're gonna make a cool park that we have no money to build anyway, right?
The way some of that was laid out was the driveways were getting counted as the open space.
Yeah, so I, obviously, it, it's one of those situations where it didn't do us any good for that open space anyway. It's better to have somebody in a lot and using it and maintaining it, right?
Paying property tax.
Paying property tax. Paying property tax.
The other thing that I haven't mentioned, that I talked to Blake and Jonathan Bowers about, the sewer that got put through there was high. And so, the alleys for those pads that we were building are 25 feet above the ground to get them to work. This solves that problem too. So all of those homes that back on the south border will have nice daylight basements, and we can get rid of that weird, sticking-out-of-the-ground padlot stuff, and it solves a lot of engineering drainage issues. It's a, it's a win-win solution for everyone, I think.
So, I mean, it's not-
So it sounds like I'm okay with everything else.
Two, two on for that one.
Are you guys okay with those changes? Jared?
Yeah, I-
Just the changes on Pod 17 and 15.
Without getting into the weeds, yeah, in the end- Without getting into the weeds, yeah, in the end. I don't have any huge heartburn, but I just wanna clarify something. For this city council person, the lot size doesn't matter to me. Right, I I've given no such instruction or directive that I want largest lots possible. Um, Steve just got done making the statement to that uh effect. I think most of us are in that camp, to Sherry's point, when this. Development came in, it was prior to Olympia. It was prior to Daybreak taking over all of Rio Tinto out there, right? We were, we were really pushing for a reasonable infrastructure plan, um. And lower densities because there's no infrastructure out here, so. Totally different conversation now, but lot size is is not a driving force for me. I won't speak for anybody else. Um, but I think that's a big misconception. I don't want that going back somewhere, single harem and rejected. This and they want larger lots, no, right? Those are all good ideas. And supportive of the efforts, et cetera, but it's, this isn't the right time, place, or a way to implement the first one. And then the second on the lot size doesn't really matter. The other things are more important, the proper placement of open space. If we're just putting a little square of open space that the public's gonna have to pay for, that doesn't serve any purpose just to meet some arbitrary requirement. That doesn't make sense either. It would be better placed in people's yards. I don't care how big their the lots are. But that sort of thing does make sense, so. I'll I'll leave it at that.
I would follow right along with Jared's comments. Especially with the statement about only larger lots or large lots possible, I got a little heated on that one. Uh, not once have we requested that, but it makes a valid sense instead of putting a random acres or frontage on. Back of lots or H O A property that's never gonna be used, not programmable, not playable, not big enough. I'd rather have it in somebody's yard.
Okay, I think I heard Steve say yep too. I think.
Thanks Teddy, well, thanks Teddy, well said. I I'm just. I I'm, I'm gonna agree with both what Teddy and Jared said. I think I wanna make, just to drive this point home one more time here. Um, I don't think anybody in this council has ever talked about. Uh, dictating any type of lot size. Um, that is just not, um, that's not a part of any conversation I've been a part of. Um, we've talked about reasonable densities, we've talked about support, you know, supportive infrastructure, we've talked about a variety of housing types. Varying price points, but never about lot size like that, so. Um, I just wanna correct that. And then, uh, as far as the rest being, uh, about the usage of the extra, um, land. I think that's a great idea. I love ideas where we're solving problems, fixing engineering problems, making it more. Attractive neighborhood, making for better living experiences, and if. We have to move around some green space to make something like that happen, that's a, that's a reasonable compromise.
Okay. You got it? Good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here, Brad.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, two point two, discussion on ten year financial model. Kyle.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you know. Uh, staff have been working for a number of months on a ten year financial model. Um, I have to give, before we start, Trevor the credit, he actually did most of the work. Uh, on this, I'm just presenting it. Um, and leading the discussion, so thank you, Trevor, for all your work on this.
And every year.
Yes. Uh, so first, before we delve into each of the different, uh, tenure forecasts, I wanted to go over some of the assumptions we made. Uh, when we were working on these models. Uh, the first is we did very conservative revenue projections. Um, I'm gonna show you some tenure histories on our major revenue sources in a minute. Um, in particular, sales and property tax, where there, um, sales tax in particular. You know, is a large component of our general fund budget and property tax funds. Our public safety function, so we did. Project those very conservatively, and then on the expenditure side, we. Uh, tried to be realistic on what, um, those increases could be leaning more towards on the. Higher side, we didn't assume it's just going to increase at one percent a year, cause that's not realistic. Uh, one thing we did do in the model is on personnel, we actually targeted different areas of personnel since that's a large. Component of the budget, so salary increases are one number, insurance is another, retirement's another. Since all of those components will grow at different rates, uh, depending on where they're at. Uh, we did, because vehicles are such, uh, and equipment are such an important. Part of our budget, and it is a component every year. Um, Trevor did calculate that in a vehicle replacement charge for all the funds, so that is already built into the budget. Uh, currently, we only have a vehicle replacement charge for the police, but Trevor in the model added it for the rest of the funds. Uh, one important thing that we will get to in a minute is, uh, Trevor worked with community development on revising our impact fee revenue collections. Uh, to be more realistic, given that we have, uh, one P I D Olympia, and then another proposed for panorama, which will have. Significant impacts on the impact fees we collect moving forward. And then finally, because we could have taken this model into hundreds of different ways, we did, with the exception of the fire service area, assume. Keeping status quo, keeping current, um, staffing levels, levels of service, et cetera. Um, and the fire service, we'll, we'll get to that, but we did, uh, put in an additional fire station, um, in a few years. So first, um, as you can tell, I'm working on the financial statements right now. Part of that is we have some tenure histories in there. So one is, this is our sales tax growth for the past ten years. Uh, what was very noticeable when I was putting this together is. We were seeing double digit increases up through, uh, twenty twenty two, actually twenty twenty. Twenty twenty three was in high single digits. Um, and then between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, it was a little over two percent. Um, of course, in the earlier years, um, because it's a smaller base, um. Though a larger percentage is easier to attain than than later on when you have a larger base. Um, as I put at the bottom, it was two point one six percent was our sales ax, sales tax increase last year. So that is one reason why we projected sales tax very conservatively. Cause this looks like this is what the trend's going to be for, for a while. Um, we also looked at our franchise tax fee, so this is our, um, energy cable T V, um, franchise tax. Once again, we had some very large increases up through twenty twenty three. Uh, just as a reminder, between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three is when both Rocky Mountain and. Enbridge, formerly Dominion, um, they had some fairly large rate increases. So we, we did see more franchise tax, but overall, between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, it was flapped. Um, in particular, cable T V is declining as as more people choose not to continue their cable service. And then finally, population, since a lot of our revenue and expenditures are driven by population. Um, as you can see, between twenty fifteen. Um, and early twenty twenties, we did see quite a bit of, uh, population growth. However, it has slowed in the past few years. Um, you'll notice in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. The graph shows a dip, and that is really. Due to how we've been estimating, um, population in the city, cause the last few years are. Uh, an estimate that we make as a city. Um, I did put down at the bottom, so right now Trevor's analysis is we're at about sixty two thousand residents. The census, which is last ye- last July, so July of twenty twenty three has us at sixty thousand. Um, and then moving forward on population estimates, uh, one factor is the way the Census Bureau is now. Calculating our, uh, population. Um, they basically put a cap on a certain area and then make all of the populations fit within that cap, so. We foresee more of the growth going to Utah County, just the way the Census Bureau allocates out population.
They're, they constrain. And so when they. From the top and the bottom, and so they. Even if we were seeing growth, but they said Utah County has more, they're gonna push it there and restrict our growth. Let's just come back. And see if Trevor could pull up quickly. I think in our estimate, the sixty two one is what we think we're at now. We were pretty close to their estimate in. Um, we had estimated in July of twenty twenty three, where they had us at sixty forty nine, we're at fifty nine thousand nine hundred ninety five in our model. So, I think our, our model's. Pretty close to theirs.
Right, that, that twenty twenty three number was not from Trevor. That's what we put in our financial statements.
If we, we had faster growth than a lot of our, our plans, then I don't think we'll ever hit it, so.
So this first chart delving into the general fund, so this looks at, it, police is excluded. From this, they, they are their own separate fund. Uh, so this looks at the general fund without funding any capital projects, um, so that black line at the top. Is estimated revenues or projected revenues. Uh, the red line going across is estimated fund balance, and then that crosshatch is. What the target fund balance is with the bottom number being, uh, the state minimum of five percent. And then the higher number being our financial policy that dictates, uh, three months of expenditures. Uh, so you can, as you can see on this, the blue, of course, is operating expenditure, so that's personnel and operating costs. Uh, so as you can see, for the most part, without capital projects and our existing revenue sources, we would be able to fund. Um, general fund operations. Um, we'll get, we'll get to it with capital, but. Um, that, that's, this is just showing. That current revenue streams and what we're projecting expenditures to be. We would have enough revenue to cover strictly operating.
And that, that service includes this proposed bond?
Yes. The next is taking the current proposed C I P, uh, and just as a reminder, the city council. Has only approved the C I P for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. However, as a staff, we have attempted to compile all the projects we foresee needing to occur. Uh, for the next ten years. Uh, if we add that in, and this, these are just the capital projects that the general fund or general revenues would need to, um, pay for. Or their portion of.
So it seems like that red line is going in the wrong direction.
That, that is correct. So as you can see, the, the dark black line is revenue. And then the orange parts are the proposed capital projects for those years, and as you can see, there is an imbalance. And you are correct, uh, Councilmember Warren, the fund balance line is going the wrong way, so it would actually show if we were to fund everything. Which we can't do legally, because we have to have a balanced budget. Uh, we would, we would be, um, negative over thirty million.
That's not much.
So here's just a few takeaways from those two charts, uh, so as I mentioned, revenues are sufficient to cover our. Operating expenditures, um, however, in twenty thirty two, our fund balance begins to decrease because our expenditures are more. Than projected, uh, revenues. Um, our current C I P, um, and as, as I mentioned, you've only approved two years of it, is thirty, almost thirty nine million. Um, of note, this does exclude a future public works building, um, at the current time, there were too many what ifs. To reasonably calculate a cost and then allocate that cost out to the very sources. Um, and of note of that thirty eight point six, there's approximately eleven million that might be covered by other sources, meaning. These are items that are being contemplated in a P I D. Um, but where the P I D hasn't been completely finalized yet, we did leave them in the C I P. We just pushed them out to the, we, there's basically a future column that we, we put those into. Um, so the recommendations are from finance, uh, as staff, we haven't sat down and. And have a proposed action plan for you, but these are some things to start thinking about as we move to that next step of the action plan. Uh, so continue pursuing economic development initiatives, of course, the council and has been great with this, and. Uh, we've, we're always looking for ways to bring in new businesses, um, that will benefit the city. Uh, the second one, I think, is a no brainer, is actually reexamining the C I P and.
Determining.
Which of those projects are the most important, um, in there. Uh, the next one is postponing some proposed projects, um, and what we mean by this is. There is limited staff capacity in the city, especially in our engineering department, that would be. The project manager on these projects. So it is feasible just due to workload. These projects would end up getting pushed out anyway, just due to bandwidth within the department. Uh, the next is a recognition that major projects, uh, will require substantial grant or outside funding. And then the last one, which we as staff have particularly started focusing more on is support technology initiatives. Um, for example, A I is becoming a big thing, and it's becoming more and more prevalent, so we are looking for ways to utilize A I. To lessen the need for employees because employees are our largest expense. Um, it's also very expensive to add employees, so we're trying to devise ways of using our current employee talent as best as possible. Some of these, however, and I think of the E R P system for finance, um, some of these do have big upfront price tags. That will save us money down the road, but it, there is that initial hurt of having to pay for the upfront cost. Next slide just shows some of the major projects. This isn't all of them in the C I P. Um, I did send you out a draft list if you want to look through it. Tonight isn't to go through these or make any decisions. This release to present information and receive feedback, but we do have some major projects on there, such as. Hundred thirty four South improvements, um, and this is just the portion the general fund would pay. Impact fees have a small portion, and then we have received a grant for a small portion. So those have been factored into these costs, you see if there's any grant funding or if impact fees can be used. Uh, Gina Road, uh, sixty four hundred West. Um, as you can see, there's, there's a few others, um, Animal Shelter, which is coming up really quickly.
And if you, if you have specific questions where these are, I'd be happy to answer, cause they don't. Phase four is the portion between Main Street and, uh, hundred thirty fourth. That part is still hanging out there. Because. Two and three are farther north. It, it, our numbering doesn't always make a whole lot of sense, but. If, if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them, uh, or give you them out.
And then when we have a C I P discussion, I was going to provide more detail on what. What these projects are covering. Cause, uh, city manager's correct. I don't, I don't even know off the top of my head what phase four of sixty four hundred West is, so. Outside of engineering. So the, next is the, uh, police fund, um, and as you're aware, but for the public, um, police is. Almost entirely funded by, uh, property tax. So this first chart is using the council directive. That new growth funds only pay for new growth expenditures, so that would be new officers or anything related to growth. Um, so as you can see, the revenue line stays stagnant because we're assuming we just have that base revenue to work with. Um, as you can see, the costs are going up. Um, and then, of course, fund balance is decreasing because this model assumes that there isn't a property tax increase to bridge the gap, so this would just be. Status quo, um, saving new growth funds for new growth. Um, and using existing revenues, so as you can see, we're about thirty million in the hole by twenty thirty four. Um, and as I mentioned, we've already gone through some of this, um. One, one thing I've noticed, the model does include a public safety building in twenty twenty eight. Um, the cost that was put in there is nineteen point five million, of course. Planning has not moved far enough along to determine an, an actual cost yet, but that, that's what's been put in for modeling purposes. Uh, to service that debt, uh, cause of course we would have to bond for that, it would be about a million and a half a year. And then looking at, okay, if we were to layer in property tax increases to zero to fund out. Um, they would range from two point seven seven in twenty seven. Um, to a little over thirty three and a half percent at the end in twenty thirty four. And then just strictly to fund the public safety building would be about thirteen and a half percent. Um, that's assuming that nineteen and a half million dollar. And that does include, we would reduce the bond amount, uh, by the impact fees we've collected in public safety, so that, that's been factored in. So the next one, um, is a model where I looked, or we looked at. Adding in that new growth revenue, so if we included that new growth as part of the base and assumed it would be, it would be able to cover. Existing expenditures. Um, it does show a, a little better picture, um, so the fund would be solvent till about twenty twenty nine, and then. Um, you know, around the time that the public safety building would be brought on. um, that's when the, the fund balance would start decreasing, um, without, without, uh, an increase to, to fund the debt service on the public safety building. Uh, next, uh, cause this was a, a council directive to come back and report on the police department's, uh, fiscal year 2024 financial performance. Uh, so the police department really did a good job this year of controlling their costs and saving money where they could. Um, they were helped, I don't, helped financially. I don't know operationally. They did have some personnel vacancies, uh, during the year, which of course those savings help. Doesn't help on the operations side. Um, so they were actually able to add about 1,060,000 into fund balance. Um, there's also some additional calculations because the property tax increase was restricted for certain things. Finance has been keeping those costs separate. Um, and then as you may or may not remember, when we passed the budget, we were essentially borrowing the money needed to fund the inflation in the department with, um, the personnel funds. So that calculation's down at the bottom. Overall, the long story short of it is, um, the police department is a little short of the two month, um, recommended fund balance. However, they do have approximately 1.5 million in fund balance. It will decrease in 25 and 26 without a tax increase. Um, just because that in, the new, the personnel funds are being used to cover the inflation temporarily. So next, uh, moving on to the park impact fee fund. Uh, so this time Trevor, Trevor mixed up the graphs a little bit, um, in a good way. Um, so the blue line or that blue section represents a fund balance. With, and this is if we funded all the capital projects that are currently in the CIP. And as you can see, the black line is revenue, which is relative, it's flat because what we did is, um, looked at 10 years worth of impact fees we'd be receiving, which survived by 10, cause we didn't know, we don't know what year it's going to come in. Um, this does also include the, the bond that is going to be issued this year to cover our MDA obligations. So did you see this? This one's not a rosy picture either. Uh, so some of the assumptions that were put into that, so one is revenues, we're only anticipating 13.1 million. Um, as I've mentioned, we do have one pit in place and then one that is proposed that drastically lower collections because those pits are building, uh, park infrastructure assets in lieu of paying that impact fee. Um, currently we have about 46.6 million in projects in the CIP. So of course you can see the, the dichotomy there. And then debt service payments on that bond for the MDA obligations is about 516,000 a year. And that's just park impact fees portion. Um, below is a list of a few of the projects currently in the CIP. So we've got Juniper Canyon, uh, the athletic sports complex, Mountain Ridge Park, Jackson Park, and then, uh, Rockwell Landing Trailhead Park and Ride. So with the park impact fee fund, um, the major staff recommendation is discuss, discussing the proposed CIP. Of course, we'll, we'll need to prioritize the projects with the funding we have available. Um, and then one thing I also add on that is looking at projects that have the least amount of operating impact to the general fund. Cause one negative thing about impact fees, well, there's many. One negative thing is we can't, the impact fees can build the park, but then we have to use other funds such as the general fund to actually operate it and maintain it. Um, the city has been great at pursuing grant funding for projects and I, of course, we should continue that. Um, and then for staff, uh, staff does need to expedite a new impact fee analysis and then an impact fee facilities plan. So we can get our parks, um, impact fees up to current levels based off of current, um, costs. Transportation impact fee is actually quite a bit better. Um, as you can see, once again, the blue is fund balance. Overall, the takeaway, um, I'm gonna skip to the assumptions. Overall, the takeaway is if we take out the projects that might be funded by a PID, um, it is all, is close to being in balance. It's actually a little over. Uh, as you can see, there, there are debt service payments due to the existing bond that was issued with City Hall for Harriman Boulevard and then the MDA obligations. Um, the major projects currently in CIP, so the 134 South Improvements we saw on the general side, this is the impact fee portion. Uh, we also have McDougal Road, Phase One, um, various traffic signals. And then as I mentioned, there are a number of road projects that are being contemplated to be paid for by the PID. So this, this one's not in terrible shape. Uh, finally is the fire service area fund. Um, this is the one that I had mentioned. Uh, assumes that in a new station is built in 2028. So this is the only one that doesn't just maintain status quo. Um, this projection does also include the rebuild of 103 that we are paying cash for. Um, as you can see, um, fund balance and everything looks great till about 2028. But when that new station comes on, it's not just the cost of the station and the debt service, but then there's also a substantial operating increase, uh, because we're, we're operating a new station. And then we did also just assume Harriman would be paying a hundred percent of that. However, under UFA's pricing model, a portion of that would go to other cities that have calls out of this station. But for this, this scenario, we assumed a hundred percent was coming out of.
And, and I think where we're basing it out of, you'll see some poll, but that may also then change like for 123 where, where it goes. So we're anticipating needing a station for ourselves. Not, we're not building one because our neighbors need it. So, uh, while they may pay for a portion of it, we should anticipate that we are paying for this as a, as a community.
So some of the assumptions I, we used on the fire service area, so very conservative on the property tax revenue. A 2% increase through 2031 and then dropping to 1%. Um, and just as a reminder, the fire service area does participate in a number of the city, um, CDAs. So that does reduce the property tax increment that is going to the RDA. Uh, we do assume a quite high operating increase, contract increase of 5% a year. And then as I had mentioned, uh, the fire station of 8.4 million. And that was taking current costs and then adding an inflationary factor. Um, and then for worst case scenario, we did also model the large station format instead of the small station format. Um, and then an operating expenditure increase of 3.4 million to run that station. And then debt service on that station of 1.4 million. So under this scenario, uh, a property tax increase of about 26% would be needed in 2031. Uh, to keep the, the funds solvent. With that, uh, are there any questions?
You had the fire station being debt fund, yes, service, so not cash.
We, we won't have the cash to, uh, to pay for that one.
And about the 30, there's about a hundred percent in everything added up. This needs 25, this needs 30, it's a need.
One, one of the things I, I hope we, we, and I know council has hit on this, the one type funds, not being addicted to those. So done a lot of things to shift those away so they're not masking some of this. But it's also impact fees. We'll often talk about it's impact fee eligible. Just because it's eligible doesn't mean there will be any funds available for it. And, and I think that's what we asked Trevor to do is realistically, what do we have? And I, I know I've heard councillor Shields talk about the 300 or 250 million dollars in capital we're supposed to build. And nowhere near enough. That's really what this is showing you. We, we have all these things to say, hey, we, we would love to build this. It's not, it's obvious that we're not going to have that. Now we have some other things that will be hopefully coming online to increase some property or some sales tax revenues and those. But almost all of those will have a component of that will be in ZEN. So we're not gonna be getting all of it. We'll be getting some of it. And in about 2035, the city will start getting all of it. And then it's just about five years too late for this. Trying to think what else. So I, I don't want anybody to think the sky is falling. This is just the reality that's probably been there forever. We're just trying to show it to you more clearly so you can make some informed decisions about how, how we do this now. And we are trying to be very conservative. I, I will admit on our expenses, I think we're probably high, but you never know. And on the, on the revenues, we're, we're growing, but we are not growing at the same percentages that we were, right? If you add the same number of homes every year, when we had 5,000 homes and you add 1,000 homes, that was a lot. When you have 18,000 homes, you add 1,000 homes, the percentage is nowhere near the same. And that's what we're, we're seeing a lot of is that we're still, that we've been more like 600 homes.
I'd rather go that way and have surplus if there is, you know, to move stuff up the project than assume the other way. I think that's.
So I think our next steps after this is we'll be bringing you back in another meeting to talk about the CIP. So outside of that big budget, but talk about those, cause usually we're focused on the two years. And we have what 70 million dollars in the total thing that we're doing these two years, which is gonna take us longer than two years to work all the way through. So realistically, we'll be talking about those out years. How do we, how do you prioritize? How do we look? So at our next meeting, I wanted to come back and not necessarily strategic, but what are those questions? What are those kind of, uh, whether it's a flow chart or something, what are the questions we should be asking on every project? Our things we bring forward that we talked about, well, how does it impact city? How does it impact residents? What is the investment? What is the rate of return? Does it have a rate of return? Those kinds of questions. That'll be coming at the next meeting, but I don't know when we were planning. But then you'll get this whole capital plan. Looking at Kyle, I don't know when we were.
We, we hadn't, we hadn't penciled it in, but I, I would probably say January just because where we only have one meeting, the next two months, those meetings might be a little packed.
Don't wanna ruin your Christmas.
Yeah, and I don't want to do it in December, cause I don't wanna ruin your Christmas.
So probably January timeframe, uh, around there to actually retackle this. And then, um, I said, the next meeting, I want to just talk about what, what are those questions we should be asking that help? So then staff is on the same, on the same wavelength with council and how we're gonna analyze these. Doesn't mean you may agree with how we apply it, but I just wanna make sure we're asking the same questions. So we, we learn over time how you want us to look at that.
I, I would just say thank you because I, I think that it's so much better to be, have the reality, here's the numbers, than it is to pretend like it's not a reality and we just continue to spend and we have no money. Or we continue to promise things that we have no money to back up. And so this is way better reality. This doesn't ruin the Christmas. This makes it go, okay, we understand what we're facing and we can address it versus pretend it's not happening.
So we do have that bond question we'll be bringing to you, but that's built in here. Those, those are all those agreements for the public, everybody who's watching. Those are agreements that were entered into by the city many years ago and said, sure, we'll pay for that. We'll pay for it later and now is later for us. And we just need to get our arms around it. And that's what council in the last budget approved. But you'll be here, you'll be getting that back to, so when you see that, that's, that's already baked into this. We, we put that in there, like we have to refund this. And so I just wanna, that's not new money on this. This is already assumed, okay, we have to fund this stuff because we already said we would. Contractually, it wasn't just a, a promise with a handshake. These are actual contracts that we signed.
MDA obligations for the most part.
Anyone online, any comments, questions?
This is Jared. Fantastic work. I've been asking for this for many years. So thank you very much. This gives us the information we need to, to start making long-term plans, but also the short-term plans to chip away at it. So, thank you.
That's the kinda comment I like. I, I will say that this was Trevor did, Trevor and Kyle did most, I just mess stuff up periodically. I try not to get in their spreadsheets, cause I get anxiety if I accidentally do something. Um, but they did a lot of work. This was a heavy lift.
Yeah.
And as we've looked at it, trying to come down and we've been promising you a, a model and it's, it's just taking, it's been a, uh, a little bit, it's a lot more complex just because of all the promises and different things and so many different pieces and funding streams that we have out here.
Just getting your hands around all the promises that were made was a feat.
And as far as we know, we have, uh, accounted for those.
Good. Thanks so much.
We appreciate it.
Stop. Don't say anymore. Just stop.
Okay. Well, we do not have a close tonight, so I will, one thing I do, everybody before I drop off in place of a joint meeting next week, Panorama is looking for a special meeting. And South Hills. For next week. So I need to know if there's a CORM available. Is that the plan? Yeah. So the, the intent is they would like to walk through what their finals proposals are. Get any questions that council may still have that are lingering. Uh, if they can answer them that night or at least be able to address them before it comes to you for final action. That's what they asked us for. One more chance to get in front of council. Um, I think we can put a time limit on their presentation so you're not sitting there forever. But what they wanna know, and I, I boarded you out the, all their Rossif, we will give you an analysis as well. But they want to know, are there things that are still missing that council is expecting from them? So they can do it before it comes to you for a final decision. Can everybody be here?
October 30th at 5:30.
Yeah, October 30th. In place of the joint meeting, which was already on our calendar. So this is just replacing. You're good Steve. Okay. Teddy?
Yes.
Jared? Tell like I'm doing real cool.
Yeah.
Okay. There's your vocal out. Okay. Okay. Plan on that then. Okay. With that, I'll look for a motion to, what's your? Don't worry me. I mean, all favor.
Aye.
Could somebody second it? Thank you.